Hello everyone, good evening and good morning to Andrea who's joining us from the US and those of you like him who are joining us from other time zones. Welcome to this Ofcom special session. Today we're going to discuss the economic rationale for public service broadcasting and public service media in the digital age. My name is Luisa Fuso and I am the Chief Economist at Ofcom. As some of you may know, Ofcom is the UK's media and telecoms regulator. And recently, the UK government announced that Ofcom is going to become the regulator for online content in the UK. Now, as we see an increasing convergence of all the sectors we regulate and the move online of media services, this has created an increasing need for a holistic and everything, if you like, of how we regulate our media sectors. Amongst the powers that we have in this space, Ofcom is responsible for making recommendations to government about public service broadcasting and how to strengthen it to preserve media plurality. And recently, alongside the Competition and Markets Authority, the government has asked Ofcom to work on a review on new sustainability. So really, some fundamental questions as we observe an increasing disruption to the traditional business models that both public service broadcasting and quality news have relied upon. As we know, as economists, some of the PSB content as well as high-quality news are public goods and they matter hugely for our democracy and our civil society. So as the traditional business models that we have relied upon for their provision are now disrupted, the question really is what will replace them and how can we regulate them? And in particular, as regards broadcasting, we have observed a move from linear to video on demand and consumption of online content, as well as the reliance on connected television, which really raises a fundamental threat for our public service broadcasting. As regards news, we now see the provision of these aggregated news through online platforms, which again has undermined the traditional model which relied on advertising support for quality journalism. So phenomenal challenges and today we have a brilliant panel with us to help try and understand a little bit better the rationale for these services in a digital age and what do we need to do to ensure that the public good elements of these services is preserved. So I'm going to introduce the panelists in the order in which they will be speaking. First, we will be covering PSB and our first speaker is Dr Helen Wheat. Helen advises on competition regulatory inquiries mainly in the communications and digital sectors as Director of Multimedia Economics and the Senior Consultant at CRA. She is Honorary Senior Research Fellow at Imperial College Business School and previously held academic posts at Oxford, Cambridge, Warwick and Essex. She has acted as advisor to the House of Commons DCMS Select Committee, to the National Infrastructure Commission and to various regulatory authorities. Helen is then followed by Kira Kalmas. Kira is an economics director at Ofcom. She specializes on broadcasting and she is the economics director who is currently leading our public service broadcasting review. Kira has extensive experience as an economist on competition policy and regulation and prior to joining Ofcom in 2011, she was an economic consultant with Compass Lexicon. Kira has background degrees in economics from Oxford, the NDLSC. We then move to focus on information and news with Professor Andrea Pratt. Andrea is Richard Paul Richmond Professor of Business at Columbia Business School and Professor of Economics at the Department of Economics at Columbia University. Prior to Columbia, he taught at Tilburg and the DLSC. His work focuses on organizational economics and political economy. His current research in organizational economics explores issues such as organizational design, corporate leadership, employee motivation and optimal disclosure. His current research in political economy attempts to define and measure the influence of the media industry on the democratic process. And last but not least, Professor Gregory Crawford is Professor of Economics at the University of Zurich and former co-director of the Industrial Organization Program at the CEPR. Greg is an empirical economist specializing in the field of industrial organization, antitrust, competition policy and media economics. His research interests include vertical integration and foreclosure, bargaining, public service broadcasting, regulation and advertising. In 2007 and 2008, Greg was Chief Economist at the Federal Communications Commission, DFCC, the US Media and Communications Regulator. So each speaker is going to give a 15-minute presentation and we are aiming to keep about 20 minutes at the end of the session to address all the questions from the audience. Please submit your questions in the Ask the Question button on the right-hand side of your screen. So that's all the background out of the way and without further ado, Helen, over to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Luisa, and thank you to Ofcom for organizing this special session. And I'm delighted to be speaking at the RAS conference. So as Luisa just flagged up, I'm going to talk about the economic rationale for public service broadcasting in this sort of digital online world that we now find ourselves in. Quick overview, I'll start by just talking about what public service broadcasting is and how it's delivered, focusing on the UK. Then I'll turn to the economics of public service broadcasting, what's the rationale for having it at all? And how do those rationales apply now that we're in this so-called digital age? As I'll say, there's sort of two main categories of concern to consider. One is consumer market failures and the other is what you might call, and Ofcom has previously called, citizen concerns. So the role that TV can play in promoting educational and social values and in particular the role of news, which is the topic that both Andrea and Greg will pick up on later. So introductory, what is public service broadcasting? Well, being in the UK, we tend to start with the mission statement that John Rees, the founding Director General of the BBC, set out in the 1920s, which is to inform, educate and entertain. Now, that's sort of all very nice, it's nice and succinct. The Communications Act 2003, which forms the legal basis for this whole system, writes things in a much more long-winded way, so I've paraphrased here. So in summary, PSB aims to provide programs covering a wide range of subject matters that satisfy many different audiences. Educational programming is a particular priority, aims to provide a comprehensive authoritative coverage of news and current affairs and sort of generally to maintain high standards in content and in the production quality. So not just what the content is about, but how it's done too. Now, many people looking at the PSB system tend to think immediately of the BBC and obviously the BBC is our flagship, it's a national public broadcaster. It's very much what we think about in this context. However, the UK system of PSB is actually a very mixed model of provision. So for reference, Channel 4 is also a PSB, S4C if you're in Wales, the Welsh language channel, the Channel 3 licensees, which are ITV in England and Wales, STV in Scotland and UTV in Northern Ireland and Channel 5, those are all PSBs. So the last of those last two categories there tend to get overlooked somewhat because people see them rather differently being commercial organizations, but they are in fact PSBs. The ownership is mixed, so we have public organizations, so-called statutory corporations, the BBC, Channel 4 and S4C, and then private commercial companies, ITV, STV, UTV and also Channel 5. So these are private companies, they have a profit maximization motive, but they've bought into this system by having a PSB license, which gives them obligations to provide the kinds of programming and standards mentioned above, and they do it in return for certain benefits. Which brings me to the issue of funding, how is all this provided? Again, people tend to think immediately of the TV license fee, just gone up to £159 a year. That money goes mainly to the BBC, a small part goes to S4C and occasionally bits are creamed off for certain other purposes, like providing broadband. There's a very small direct government grant which goes to S4C, I believe that's being phased out. And then all of the PSBs other than the BBC carry advertising, so they earn money from advertising. The commercial ones and Channel 4 rely entirely on advertising revenue to fund their services. Note that because the PSBs have prominence on the EPG or Electronic Program Guide, as well as this helping them serve their public service mission, which is obviously a primary aim, purpose of having it, it also does help boost their advertising revenue because viewers tend to find them more easily and watch them more often. Just as an additional factor on the DTT, the terrestrial system, the PSBs have gifted their spectrum or they obtain it at lower fees for Channel 3 and Channel 5. So if you like, there's a subsidy to their costs in that way. So turning to the economics of all of this, why do we have this system? So Ofcom in previous PSB reports has divided up the sort of two categories here quite neatly into consumer market failures. I would characterize this as the question, will the market deliver the content that people themselves want to watch? And we need to think here particularly about diversity of content, do we have the content that meets especially minority and niche tastes? And then the quality of programming as well. Historically, this has been a major concern that a purely privately provided programming might not meet these aims. The second set of rationales for PSB are so-called citizenship concerns, and I could sum this up as content we'd like everybody else to watch because it does good for all of us. So this is particularly clear with educational programming, do you think that's generally a good thing? Programming that promotes social values and social cohesion. And a particular element here, democratic concerns, voter information, the way that the political process works and the role of the media in that, and this is an area that Andrea and Greg will pick up on later. In economic terms, we can think about these citizenship concerns as positive externalities. The viewing of such content generates a benefit beyond the viewer themselves. This then raises two issues. We know when there are positive externalities associated with a certain product, the provision of it will tend to be too low. So here, all these worthy forms of educational, socially valuable or voter informing programming will tend to be under-provided. But there's also a second question, which is very important and I think particularly relevant now in the digital world, which is the consumption side. It's all very well producing this programming, but if nobody watches it, then the positive externalities aren't realized. So we really need to ask the question, will this programming actually be watched and generate all these wider benefits that we care about? So what's happening, what do we mean by digitization in this sector? I tend to think primarily about the consumption side here, and so if you go back to, well, my childhood, it's the world on the left-hand side of my slide, old-style television with just a limited range of channels. Actually, in my childhood, it was only the BBC and ITV, then along with my teens came Channel 4 and then latterly Channel 5, that wasn't even available to the whole country anyway, so very limited choice. Then with digitization, that's done two things, I mean both within the terrestrial or in airwave broadcast systems, it gets called in most different countries, massive expansion in the number of channels that can simultaneously be carried, so huge expansion there, but also a proliferation in platforms, different ways of accessing television. Since the 1980s, 1990s, in the UK, we've had cable and satellite television, those could carry many more channels than the terrestrial system and with digitization, those can carry up to 500 channels. Now with the internet, this gives us IPTV and over-the-top services, which can be watched not just on a traditional TV set, but on a number of different devices, tablets, games consoles, mobile phones and so on. So massively increasing ways of consuming as well as this connection over which the programming is carried. And in response to all of that, we now have a set of new services, particularly the OTT over-the-top or video on-demand services, Netflix, I should put Amazon Prime as well, YouTube, Disney Plus and increasingly more and more of the movie studios are entering distribution directly with their own over-the-top services, so like Disney Plus. So what do we mean by consumer market failures here? In the analog world, with very limited capacity for distribution and in the UK at least, no way of excluding viewing, so television services, private television services would rely on advertising funding. This does, and there's a long literature on this going back to 1950s, generate outcomes which do not necessarily serve consumers best. With limited capacity and at funding, you tend to end up with too great a concentration on the sort of mass market or most popular tastes, niche tastes don't get satisfied, it can be a sort of race to the bottom or lowest common denominator type programming, quality may well not be high enough. So these are well-known concerns in the analog world and from an economics perspective, one can view PSB as at least in part a response to those problems. In the digital world, however, many of those things change. So obviously, we've got massive capacity now for distributing content, can make content more cheaply as well, that's another aspect of digitization. The ability to charge certainly now much easier. Cable is inherently excludable, satellite is launched with encryption systems that mean you have to pay if you want to watch it, DTT can be done that way. The UK generally we don't. And over-the-top services, again, you can have a paywall and make it a subscription service. And what we've seen now is a variety of business models, you know, free, pay, premium, a lot of innovation in how services are delivered. So on the face of it, at least, and I think this is a broad statement, it's true that the consumer market failures of the analog world have been largely corrected by this. Doesn't mean that you might have some concerns remaining, there's a lovely book by Joel Ward-Fogel, which summarizes his research, his and other people's research up to the time of publication, he's written quite a bit more too, on tyranny of the market. So idea of tyranny of the market, like tyranny of the majority in politics, is that when you have differentiated products, so people might have demand for different things or you might just like a mixture of things, and there are large fixed costs of providing each of those products, then you get what are called preference externalities. What gets provided depends on the preferences of other people, not just me. So whether or not my preferences are served depends on whether other consumers share my tastes. So there are potential issues as to whether this is still the case and Joel's book casts quite a lot, and all his research casts quite a lot of light on this, that you can still get some biases in terms of minority groups may well not be as well-served as majority groups. You can think about this ethnically, if you're in an ethnic minority, you may find that the content available to you on television through all these other means seems largely not satisfying your tastes. So there's also quite a lot of literature about what happens with content in the digital world. Chris Anderson, for example, has promoted the idea of the long tail and there's empirical evidence of this massive growth in the number of products that gets produced, you know, you can certainly see that. But then there's concerns that this long tail is actually a very thin tail as well because you still get effects that result in concentration on sort of superstar products. Turning to citizenship concerns, there's a lot of recent literature, some lovely papers, and I urge everybody to read this survey by Delvin Yon Lafferrara, where people are quantifying, so identifying, quantifying the effects of television viewing on certain social outcomes that we might care about, like education, social effects, health awareness and behavior. I won't go through this in detail, I think I'm getting rather short of time, but I'd urge people to read that paper. But all of this raises an issue of effectiveness, because these are externalities, this is content we care about people actually watching, how do we bring this about? In the analog world, particularly go back to the 1920s where the only broadcaster was the BBC, this is easy. John Rees talked about the brute force of monopoly, there's nothing else to watch, so you end up watching this stuff as long as the BBC puts out lots of worthy, good quality programming, then people will watch it, unless they just turn off and do something else. Digital world, there's this lovely saying, lovely line from Richard Ayer, free school milk doesn't work when the kids go and buy Coca-Cola because it's available and they prefer it and they can afford it. So public service broadcasting will soon be dead. So I think this is one of the challenges that Ofcom is looking at, how to keep PSB, or move PSB into this digital online world. One idea is you have to follow the viewer, the PSBs have their online services, but there's issues now about giving them prominence, whether the obligations of PSBs should be extended to those and so on. Should we think more broadly about providing through a wider range of providers, should we have PSB content on Netflix, for example? And always the challenge of the attractiveness of programming, you know, people ultimately have to choose to watch this stuff, otherwise there's no point broadcasting it. Turning specifically to news, Greg and Andrea will pick up on this. TV plays a number of roles in political affairs, again, there's a lovely survey by Stromberg in 2015, looking at a large literature here. So TV is both a source of little information and a forum for debate, it's a means of monitoring politicians, journalists go out and investigate what politicians and public servants are doing, and it's a channel of communication. And we can think about this in two directions, the government can sort of influence what people think, but also the fact that people are listening to and watching that and reacting to it by going and voting is quite an important mechanism for determining what the government ends up doing. There are externalities here because we care about these things in a system where we all vote, we care that people are informed, we care about politicians being scrutinized, we care about how public spending is directed. So news may be under-provided, it may also be a bit misdirected, so we can care a lot about media bias and there's a lot of literature on that. Media plurality is another issue, there's concerns in the US about sort of some bubbles where people only listen to content that reflects their own sort of starting point and don't listen to wider voices, so media plurality systems and arguably PSB plays a role in this. Fake news, it's a particular concern in the digital world and again, PSB may have a role to play here. Empirical evidence surveys show that the PSBs, along with other television channels, are generally seen as trusted sources of news. The PSBs have a particular remit to cater for diverse viewers, maybe they could play a role in ensuring that less informed people actually become informed. I think Andrea will pick up on that. But PSBs are not necessarily themselves free of accusations of bias and we need to think carefully about how they work and I think the funding of PSB is particularly important to that because ultimately the PSBs rely in some way on government for their money, even if that's only the maintenance of the license fee system and the level at which it's set. Okay, just to conclude, so in my view at least, consumer market failures are no longer a compelling basis for having a public service broadcasting system. So to me, the case comes mainly from citizenship concerns or positive externalities, we've seen the various elements of that. But then in the digital world, effectiveness is a particular challenge and in relation to news, making sure there's plurality, thinking about bias and that the design of the system and the funding sources matter in this context. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kira Kalmas and I'm the Economic Director for Broadcasting at Ofcom. I'd like to speak today about Ofcom's review of PSB, which we consulted on in December last year. This review covers some aspects of the challenges of PSB in the online world. We cover many different areas and I'll turn just to today. Firstly, whether we still need PSB and secondly, the challenges of online availability and On the first area, as Helen has set out, the rationale for public service broadcasting has changed. The world has moved from an analog system constrained by spectrum availability to one where UK broadcasters compete for viewers with a growing number of competitors, including Sky, Netflix, Amazon Prime, Disney and even YouTube. As a result, viewers have a greater choice than ever before, including high-quality drama, high-quality programs provided by non-PSB rivals such as Netflix and Sky. So given this, is there still an economic rationale for PSB? First, as Helen pointed out, some content generates positive externalities. As private firms do not take such externalities into account, this content risks being under-provided. This includes most obviously news, but also can include content that reflects local areas. Global streaming services have incentives to get enduring content that is local appeal, content that's local and perishable, of which local and regional news is a prime example, risks being under-provided. And here, like I include a quote from Netflix, which emphasizes, you know, how well Hollywood content travels across the world. There's a reasonable consensus that it's important for PSB to provide these sort of areas, particularly news and current affairs. Where there's less consensus is whether PSB likes to extend beyond this and in particular whether PSB should provide popular content. I'd like to make a number of points here. First, there's a false dichotomy between popular content and content with social value. Social messages can be embedded in popular content. UK soaps have long been a vehicle for raising social issues and PSBs are explicitly tasked to consider social value when making content. Second, having popular content attracts audiences and builds a brand, making audiences more likely discover other content by the same provider. This can therefore mean higher audiences for content such as news and current affairs. Third, PSBs can create a sense of universality. They're available to everyone in the UK who has a TV, subject course to the license fee and can create national moments. This sort of social glue can be important for society. Popularity is also important for finance. Commercial PSBs such as Channel 4 and ITV have a cross-subsidy model where the revenue from popular programs is used to fund other areas such as news and current affairs. This may be less direct for the licensee, but in order for it to be sustainable, the BBC needs to attract viewers who are willing to pay the fee. Given that we still want PSB, how then can we adapt it for a world where viewers are increasingly viewing online rather than broadcast TV? As Helen pointed out, you know, in order, you know, it's not just enough for the PSBs to make programs, they have to be effective and prominence is really important in helping PSBs reach audiences. And prominence is really important in helping PSBs reach audiences. The 2003 Comms Act gives Ofcom the power to protect the prominence of PSB linear channels on electronic programme guides. In Ofcom's last review, we guaranteed the top slots for the main PSB channels. However, these rules apply only to linear channels. There are no equivalent rules guaranteeing prominence for those of you on demand. Instead, commercial negotiations determine outcomes. The picture here is of my Samsung Smart TV. When I call up the menu for an on-demand service, a range of players come up, including Netflix, Amazon Prime, YouTube. On my TV, most of the UK PSB players are there. You can see iPlayer, all four, and ITV Hub can be seen on the left, though my five isn't there. The current positions of these PSB players are achieved through commercial negotiations with no legal protections. Ofcom recommended that legislation be introduced for online prominence in July 2019 to protect the position of PSBs. The government has accepted our recommendations and plans to act, but to date, the carriage and prominence of PSBs online is left to commercial negotiations. These commercial negotiations are complex. There are many providers of content and many platforms for reaching the customer. Prominence by its nature is scarce. Only some services can be prominent, and this makes prominence highly valuable. Here, the UK's PSBs compete for prominence with global streaming services such as Netflix, Amazon, Apple TV, Disney Plus, as well as national ones such as now to be in BritBox. And in some cases, payments are made to secure prominence. A report last year that Ofcom commissioned from the research firm Mediatec found that in these sort of negotiations, the balance of power is shifting in favour of large global players. And this has already led to observable declines in the bargaining power of domestic content providers. This creates a risk that UK PSBs and other national broadcasters are squeezed by services that have already secured prominence at global level, which is why we consider legislation to protect PSB prominence is needed. But rules on these, but rules on this prominence may not be enough. In Ofcom's December consultation, we stated that legislation for PSB prominence may need to be accompanied by rules on availability. On linear TV, PSB channels are subject to must-off or must-carry rules, which ensure that they're carried on all main broadcast transmission routes. Again, these rules do not apply to on-demand services. This creates a risk for audiences if negotiations between PSBs and platforms break down. In many cases, as with my own TV, PSBs have been able to secure prominence and availability. However, some devices have been launched in the UK without any PSB players after negotiations broke down. And some PSB players are not available on some devices, again, because negotiations broke down. We're concerned that this is not in the interest of audiences, and so in our December consultation, Ofcom recommended that the new framework should also secure the availability of PSM on a range of platforms. Securing this availability is not straightforward and is much more complex than linear broadcasting. Negotiations between the PSBs and platforms cover a large number of areas. Prominence, the format of the content, access to audience data, ad revenue and editorial control. You know, just taking prominence, for example, even like considering what prominence actually is, is also complex. Prominence isn't just the position of apps, but can also be the position of individual programs in search of recommendations, or even the addition of a specific button on a remote control. These negotiations also need to be carried out with multiple platforms, including TV manufacturers such as Samsung, LG or Sony, pay TV platforms such as Sky Q and Virgin, and with connected device TV devices such as the Amazon Fire Stick or Google Chromecast. And often, when we look at individual customer, they may have more than one device. For example, I both have a Samsung Smart TV, but also an Amazon Fire Stick. Other customers may have that as well as a Sky box, and all of these can be used as ways of accessing content. You know, and you know, in addition to this, in addition to prominence, there are several other areas which are covering these negotiations, including access to data, which helps to personalize recommendations, and advertising revenue. Some platforms seek to have a share of advertising revenue as part of their standard terms. To date, UK PSBs have been able to resist this, but this is a potential future concern. And so in considering our recommendations to government, we as Ofcom will need to consider what should be specified in regulation or codes of practice, and what can be left to commercial negotiations. We'll also need to consider how disputes can be resolved and how to make sure rules stay up to date. In all of this, our objective is audiences, and to make sure that any intervention is proportionate. We care about the sustainability of the PSB system, the wider market's ability to innovate and customer choice. We need to find our way through these interests, recognizing that there's sometimes intention, and find the most proportionate and practical way true. I.e. what is the minimum regulation necessary to achieve availability for PSB in a way that's sustainable and doesn't unnecessarily impinge on innovation? And how can this be flexible for market innovation, market changes? And we plan to publish our recommendations to government this summer. Thank you.
Can you hear me and see my slides? Great. Thank you so much for inviting me here. It's a pleasure to be here for this very important topic and this great pal. I am gonna start with, with a number of things that Helen, we've said. There are many aspects to PSB, and what I will be mostly interested in is citizenship concerns. And in particular, one aspect of citizenship concerns that I think might be quite important, then this is information inequality. We have a lot of empirical evidence, very good causal evidence that information is power. If a particular population segment becomes more informed about politics, the government will treat them better, political candidates will treat them better. This evidence comes from the US, the UK and various other countries. I think it's one of the strongest Thailand's facts we get in media economics. But this poses an obvious problem. Suppose political information is unequally distributed across socioeconomic groups. This will add to existing inequalities, because on top of existing inequalities, the government will also treat these segments of the population worse. So this is a, what in my view is perhaps the most important role of PSB in this area, which is to reduce the information gap and to make sure that the information poor are more informed. What I would like to do in this next, in the next 14 minutes, and Lisa stop me if I go overboard, is to provide some very, very tentative evidence on all of this. So some evidence on how large information inequality is, and who are the people who have lower levels of information? And then some even more tentative evidence on what public service broadcasting is doing, and whether it is succeeding in serving the information poor. Caveat, some of the data is about the UK, but most of it is about a range of countries, including the UK, and some of it is only about the US. So how do you measure information inequality? One, as Helen said, we have supply, we have news that are put out there, milk, and it's unclear that people are drinking this milk. So the first thing is looking at consumption, looking at how, whether, where people are getting their political news from. And the second one is, this is something that feels more and more insufficient, because there's a sense that news can be presented in very biased and uninformative ways, so consuming that type of news will actually not lead to information. So we're not in the end interested in how much milk you drink, but we're interested in what that milk does to you. And so we would like to measure, to see how informed people are. This is more tentative evidence that I'm sharing with you today. So let's begin with consumption. We have a large, my co-author and I have looked at a large number of survey subjects in 36 countries, and basically, we see where they get their news from. We look at their news diet in the past week, basically. One important pattern, one clear pattern is that there are two main sources of information today. One is still television, so this is an important point for PSB. Television is far from dead. It is, in most countries, is the prevalent source of news. The other one is various forms of online news. And one important thing to see is that usually, often, they are actually online version of traditional platforms, be it television or newspapers. So that too is important to keep in mind when we think about PSB, because their online presence may be quite large. Once you have that, you can compute the news diet of every subject in these 36 countries. And by the way, there is a lot of similarity across countries, so that's one thing we, we found out, is that the patterns are obviously different, but there's a lot of, a lot of similarity. And you can compute the reach, which is what percentage of the population uses a particular source. And you can compute the attention share, so how much, if you use many sources, how much of your attention goes to one share rather than another? And you can do that in aggregate and see what the most attention gathering news sources are in different countries. And here, I am reporting two examples that are in a sense the most extreme. They're very different. One is the US at the top, the other one is the UK at the bottom. And you see the importance of PSB in a country like the UK, both in terms of reach and attention share. Now, in every country, you see a high level of concentration, and typically, you get a a television network at the top, and often Facebook is a social media source. This, by the way, shows the, again, the large potential role for PSB in news consumption. As I mentioned before, and this is probably one of the largest policy debates of the past five years, is the gap between consumption and information when it comes to news. So there's the idea that many people are consuming a lot of news from social media in various forms. And that is actually leading not to better information, but to misinformation and disinformation. This is often, as you can see from this box, this is often put in very extreme terms and talking about the post-truth world and the death of truth. And it is perceived as one of the biggest challenges in the US. There are serious constitutional scholars that are suggesting that we should modify the First Amendment in order to help with this problem. So given the importance of this, I think it's very important to have more evidence about it, and evidence, so one thing we know for sure is that fake news are widely circulated. There is a lot of evidence for that. What we know less of, and so, but this is on the supply side. We know much less on consumption and especially on the effect of information. There is some limited mixed evidence that people are affected by fake news. But here, one of the big problems is that perhaps the worst effect of fake news is that they make us confused, and they make us unable to actually know what the real news are. And so this effect has been hypothesized in many ways. And as far as I know, we have very little information on how informed people are about real news and how able they are to distinguish real from fake news. So what we've been trying to do, and this is very much work in progress, and we would definitely love to extend it to other countries. But so far, we've only done it for the US. We've worked with a panel of journalists to identify the top three stories of the month, in this case, in US domestic politics. And then we've worked with a, a nonprofit that tries to stop fake news, and they identified the top three most circulated fake stories of the months. We take a panel of a thousand subjects, and we mix the three and fake, real and fake stories. And we asked these subjects, incentivizing them with money and giving them a short time to tell us whether they know which stories, which of the three stories are the real ones. We, I won't bother you with the econometric and theory, but we have a model to net out lucky guesses and just ruling out stuff, so that we get a sense of the information they have. So this is one way, one possible way of measuring the distance between journalistic truth as defined by journalists and what people know. So what do we find? One way of measuring this is to say what percentage of people are able to confidently identify as true the most important news story of the month. And by confident, we have some monetary incentive, is that they would bet $3 against one, that that story is true. How many people are, do the opposite, they confidently believe that that story is false? They would be betting $3 against one story's false, and what percentage are uncertain, they're not in those two categories. One idea would be to see, are they more or less informed in politics than sport and entertainment? So we repeat these for sport and entertainment with the same format. Then we also do the same for fake stories. We see how many people are willing to bet on fake stories. And ultimately, we wanna know what socioeconomic characteristics predict your ability to distinguish fake, real from fake stories. And what we get is as follows, we get, we basically get a a split, a split country. You have about 60% of the people are confident in, can identify the most important story of the month. A very small percentage, only 3%, actually think that's false. And then there's a large minority that just don't know. So that seems to point at a lack of information being a larger issue that missing, compared to misinformation. This, there doesn't seem to be a particular politics issue, because if you ask the same questions, to say you do something about sport and entertainment, you get similar similar percentages. So it seems to be a, and if you do the same for fake stories, you get percentages that are the percentage of people who believe in fake stories is slightly larger than the percentage of people who believe that real stories are fake, but it's still not huge. So this seems to point at information inequality, and we find a huge effect of that. We find that you're much more likely to be in the 41% of people who are either uninformed or falsely informed if you are young, low income, less educated, a woman or a member of a minority. These effects are large. These effects are much larger, for instance, than partisan. These effects are large. These effects are much larger, for instance, than partisan effects. Whether you're a Democrat or a Republican actually doesn't matter a lot. So this is seemingly pointing at inequality being a a large problem in practice. And if you believe that government is going to treat worse uninformed segments, then you would expect the government to treat the young, the low income, the less educated women and minorities worse than the other majority segments. Let me be even more tentative now that I talk about PSB. So we, I think we can say we have an information inequality problem. What can PSB do about it? The only good answer I can give you is we do not know. I've never seen good experimental evidence on the effect of PSB. I think this is something that should be done. I think all governments that fund PSB should require randomized control trials of some form to understand what the effect of PSB and to optimize. This is an important message. But with the evidence we have, let's look at consumption and information for PSB. Now, remember, the information poor are more likely to be young, low income, female, less educated. Are these categories more likely to use, and this is something we do on our data, for all the countries in our dataset that have PSB? Are these categories more likely, relatively more likely to use PSB or the leading commercial television network? Okay? The answer is they're relatively more likely to use the commercial TV network compared to other categories. So if you look at the relative usage of private, of the top private TV network versus PSB for, say, income, it goes it goes down as your income goes up. So in relative terms, PSB seems to be serving the rich, the old, the educated and men. I think this is something that it's a pattern. It's a, it's a, it's a data that we need to think about. Is it a cause or is it an effect? We don't know. We honestly don't know. It's difficult to tell. One could say, you know, these people are more informed because they watch PSB. Or you could say somehow there's, there's something about PSB that kind of turns away certain segments. It's very difficult to tell and I think we need more information. We have some, the only piece of information I know about this comes from a long time ago from Sweden. And it's kind of reversed. It's what happens when commercial television is introduced. This happened in Sweden in the late eighties. And we have data on the political information. We test the thousand, we don't do it. We use the data that did that. A thousand Swedes before and after the introduction of commercial television. Now, if you look at the cross section of this panel after the introduction, you will see that people who watch commercial television are less informed than people who watch state TV. So this seems to point to, this confirms the effect that we saw before. But what's more interesting is this is a panel. And so what we see is that actually people who switched from state to commercial television, this is very surprising, not at all what we were expecting to find. People who switch from state to commercial television become more informed, become relatively more informed. They are still less informed than the other ones, but they are more informed than they were before in relative terms. So this seems to point that something that state TV, at some gap between supply and consumption for PSB, something we need, we should think about. And this concludes my very tentative evidence on this. I think I'm quite confident and say that there is a large inequality in political information and this is a large policy issue. I'm also confident and say that PSB should have a role in reducing that gap. And I'm also confident in agreeing with Helen that there is a big difference between supply and consumption. The fact that we put good news, high quality news out there doesn't mean that people consume them. And I want to add that the fact that people consume news doesn't mean they get informed. And so we need to do more to study these two links. There is some evidence that something is going wrong with PSB in both of these links and that PSB is not perhaps doing as much as it could to reduce information inequality. Lots of caveats. This is mostly not about the UK. Correlation is not causation. The data is so, so in many ways you can the papers are available, so you can look under the hood. Questions for the future? I think the main one for me is cause or effect. Understand having experiments to try and understand what PSB does. All this is complicated by social media. So how does that, how do we think about all this? In a world where social media is more and more informative and important, then I guess in the end, I would, I think this is the right time to ask very broad questions about PSB. Those of us who believe that PSB is extremely important. And in particular, those of us who believe that the media, the states should be subsidizing the media should ask themselves broad questions about it. I suggest that you read the book by Julia Kajay on how to fund the media. And this concludes. Thank you very much.
Okay, so let me jump in. I'll start by first thanking Luisa and Ofcom and the organizers of the session. It's my very great privilege to speak a little bit about, in this case, I'm segueing from some of the topics that all of the other panelists have spoken about, not so much about PSBs, rather more about news. And I'll try to build in some discussion of PSBs both throughout and a little bit at the end. So I'm actually going to talk about a little bit the intersection. I have two hats. I'm interested in media policy and especially PSBs. But I'm also very much interested in competition policy. And so the previous discussions have largely talked about television and the role that PSBs play in providing news on television, but I'm going to talk about something a little bit different and news online and especially on digital platforms. So, so let me start by just showing you a few things that you, I'm sure many in the audience already know that Luisa referred to in her opening statements. And of course, the internet has really dramatically impacted business models in media generally, but certainly in news. And in news, there has been a double hit. Sort of the first ten or fifteen years of the internet, it was a little bit the death of classified ads with Craigslist in the US and various other platforms in other countries. But in the last eight to ten years, there's been a significant disintermediation of news providers and where consumers get their news. As Andrea mentioned, often online consumers are reading the websites of news producers, including, for example, the BBC. But that has not necessarily been revenue neutral for them in that Facebook and especially Google have captured a significant share of the advertising revenue that comes, at least online in general. And that's had certainly a negative impact on news providers' advertising revenue. This is, this is a figure from the Australian Digital Platform Inquiry. And it shows the growth in online advertising expenditure. And you can see that it's come at the expense largely of newspapers. TVs have been pretty resilient. Television in general has been pretty resilient. And of that online, it's dominated especially by Google and by Facebook. So the internet has devastated news business and particularly newspapers. So you can see by whatever count this is measures of real ad revenue, I would say here, this first bit of the first half of the decline is from sort of the loss of classified ads. The second half of the decline in advertising revenues more from this disintermediation by digital platforms. And that's naturally having a significant consequence on the employment of journalists and the ability of news providers to produce news, which then calls into question, what are we going to do as a society? Because as all of the speakers have mentioned, news is an important public good. And because it's important, it's important just as a source of political information, but also monitoring politicians and public servants. I refer to Helen's paper that she wrote in, as a companion to the Ofcom PSB review, but there's lots of evidence of this across the spectrum. And so if news is likely underproduced, this recent disintermediation isn't it's just basically more fuel on the fire. It makes the problem more pressing. And so there's an open question about what to do. And so that's the segue into the topic of this talk, which is that Australia came up with an idea. Right? So first, let me say with my competition policy hat on that Australia is really genuinely a leader in addressing the competition issues associated with the rise of dominant digital platforms. So DPs here means digital platforms. So they were the first among many countries to launch and publish a digital platforms inquiry, followed by the UK Furman Report and the ECU report. There was a Stiglerson report in the US. They've been opposed to mergers that other jurisdictions have allowed through. But that's competition policy. But unlike most of these other reports, they also have been at the forefront in explicitly addressing their impact, the impact of the rise of digital platforms on news provision. So in April of last year, the Australian government asked the ACCC, which is the Australian Competition Authority, to develop a mandatory code of conduct to address the bargaining power imbalance between the Australian news media and digital platforms specifically naming Google and Facebook. So this is really at the beginning, the treasurer will be able to expand beyond Google and Facebook with time, but at the moment, this is really about Google and Facebook. And this is called the Australian Bargaining Code, or which I will summarize conveniently to the ABC. So what am I going to talk about today? I'm going to try to share a little bit about what is the Australian Bargaining Code? What is there to like about it and what maybe is there to dislike about it, or what have some people disliked about it? And finally, how is it played out over time? This is still very much work in progress. I mean, this is a real time evaluation of a pretty major policy change, media policy change. And so of course, you know, dust has certainly not settled, but it's, it's far enough along that it's useful to take a look and see what maybe can be. Okay, I think it's always important when you talk about digital platforms, about disclosures. I do sometimes consult, but I had no, no role in this Australian consultation at all, nor on any topics related to any of those discussed in this talk. So this is all just my own personal. Okay, so what was the Australian or what is the Australian Bargaining Code? So it basically requires, it seeks to address this bargaining imbalance. So it requires Google and Facebook to negotiate with news businesses, which have to be defined and are defined over the compensation for news content. So let me say right away that this is regulation. This is a form of regulation that's seeking to address what it sees as an imbalance in the share of revenues that go, for people interested in news that are going to the news producers relative to the digital platform. There are several critical elements to it. There's the ability for information gathering powers. So these are meant to be commercial negotiations. So for example, Google would negotiate. So the largest by revenue news producer in Australia is News Corp. Rupert Murdoch owned News Corp. So in commercial negotiations between Google and News Corp, they just have their commercial negotiations. But it's underlined by this law, which gives both parties, but especially the News Corp, information gathering power. So if, if need be, if they can't reach an agreement, they would have the ability to seek information from Google to seek to try to quantify the value to Google of News Corp news. There are non-discrimination provisions, which just give the regulation teeth. So it prevents the substitution of non-Australian news for Australian news. There are minimum standards. There are collective bargaining terms, minimum standards for non-price terms like algorithm changes. There's the ability for collective bargaining, particularly relevant for maybe smaller players. But the most interesting from an economics perspective is that there is, this bargaining is backed up by what's conventionally called baseball style or final offer arbitration. Baseball style, because in the US, the same system underlies negotiations between baseball player and baseball team. Which is that if a deal cannot be reached and after an appropriate waiting period and it goes to an arbitrator, then each side presents a single final offer to the arbitrator, who then picks one of the two offers. There's no splitting the difference. There's no, the arbitrator has no discretion other than A or B. So what's to like about this? So Christina Kafara and I wrote a paper about it. And there's a reasonably rich economic literature about final offer arbitration. It's been used in patenting to resolve licensing disputes and patent disputes. The nice thing about it is this, this because the arbitrator can only pick one of the two offers, it encourages both sides of the, both sides of the negotiation to come up with something fairly reasonable, not something extreme. Because if you come up with something extreme, the arbitrator is likely to choose the other party's offer. And so it encourages parties to basically, because they're getting closer to each other, to reach agreements without ever going to arbitration. So it's sort of the backstop that best prevents itself from being used. This granting of information gathering powers is actually quite important to identify the key elements. So I study bargaining and bargaining is well established in economics and it's been applied to a number of different settings empirically. And one of the key things in any bargaining model or in any bargaining problem is what's the size of the pie to be split? Well, the law acknowledges that news providers benefit from the links provided by digital platforms. So if someone searches for a news article on Google and Google links to that news article, that clearly provides the news provider benefit. But it also goes the other way. In the case of Google, the primary value to Google of offering that link is not from selling ads on the Google News page. They don't actually sell any ads on the Google News page. But rather much more likely is that seeing what news individual consumers are reading on the internet provides Google with data, especially data about their interests. Are they a Times reader or a Guardian reader? What particular articles within the newspaper do they read? Do they read more sports? Do they read more business? And so my, there's very little evidence on this, but my prior and my belief is that this consumer interest data revealed by news consumption could be potentially quite valuable. And there's also a second potential value, which is it may weaken potential competitors by having consumers come to Google and Facebook for news. They don't go directly to news sites or to news aggregation sites. And that can weaken potential competitors for consumer attention online. The most important thing by far, however, is it actually gets the regulator out of making decisions. So if the Australian government decides it wants to regulate, how does it do it? Does it, does the ACCC decide on how much the digital platforms should pay? And how much each of that should go to News Corp or, or the other various news providers that are active in the Australian market? That's a very difficult problem. There's huge informational asymmetries. And so the nice thing about this regulation is it gets the news providers and the digital platforms, the guys that know far better the value of news or news consumption data, to make valuation and reach a deal without it having to go to a regulator. Without it having to go to a regulator who of course would have to make the decision possibly wrongly. And would also be potentially subject to regulatory capture. So getting the regulator out of the middle is a nice feature of this regulation. And I mentioned I have this paper, we looked at the Australian model, but we actually think for those of you that also have interest in competition policy. That such a structure could be quite promising for decentralized regulation generally. For regulating the activities of dominant digital platforms more broadly. Okay, so what are some of the reactions from tech commentators? They've not been so positive. You hear things like it's a shakedown. Well, yes, I mean, it's a, you know, it's a form of regulation. It's a, it's explicitly seeking to to address the bargaining imbalance. And so it does seek to transfer money from platforms to news organizations. The nice thing about this in our view, in my view, is that that it does so without the regulator having to be involved. Some people have said, just tax them instead. And I think this bargaining code is better because there's less scope for this regulatory capture that I mentioned earlier. Some people have said. Digital platforms paying publishers, it should go the other way. Publishers should be paying 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 digital platforms. And in my view, there's just no evidence to support this claim. As I said earlier, clearly, digital platforms provide value to publishers. But I think publishers also provide value to digital platforms in the form of this data and and potentially competitive effects. And it's my firm belief that nobody knows actually which which way the payment should go. And it's certainly quite plausible that it could go from digital platforms to news publishers. Okay, so that's all about the structure of the code, what's to like, what's not to like? Let me finally bring in public broadcasters, so the ABC and the ABC. So this is an unfortunate duplication of shorthand. So the finalized bargaining code actually also applies to the Australian Public Broadcaster, which is also called the ABC, the Australian Broadcasting Corporation. They weren't actually included in the first draft of the legislation, but ultimately they were. And for my part, I think there's no reason that they should not be clearly. The Australian Broadcasting Corporation, like many public broadcasters, produce quite a bit of news. And there's no reason in my mind that they shouldn't be compensated for that. So I'll talk a little bit more about about tying into what Kira was saying. That there's issues of compensation, but there's also issues of prominence and. She was talking about in the context of online platforms like Netflix. But these same issues arise here with digital platforms for the news, the printed news content of both the video and printed news content. Okay, so how is it played out? This has been quite interesting. So this, these, the news broke of this new bargaining code last July. And it came before Parliament in December. And right away, Google threatened to pull search from Australia. That was January. In February, they started reaching agreements with publishers. So they changed their mind. This was big news everywhere worldwide. And February 17th, Facebook actually banned news in Australia, so Australian users could not share news, period. Six days later, they changed their mind. They reversed the news ban, the news ban. They achieved some amendments negotiated with the government. My view is that these amendments were quite mild, that the basic structure that I've just described didn't change. So that this, in my view, was a win for the Australian government. And then in March, they started reaching agreements with publishers. So where are we now? So it's, so this is now a month old. I tried to find more news, but this is the most recent I could find. At the moment, both among the three biggest Australian news producers, which are News Corp, Nine West and the Australian Broadcasting Corporation, the public. Both Google and Facebook have deals with each of the two big commercial providers, but not yet, as far as I know. So if anyone knows differently, please. Correct it, not yet with the ABC. Okay. So what are some conclusions? So let me wrap up by trying to draw some lessons from this first experiment more broadly. And this ties into a little bit of what Andrea was also saying, his final comment. So my view is that. Governments worldwide are just going to have to confront this idea of public subsidies for news. If you look at the the trend in in commercial revenues for news organizations, they're just dropping. So if we as a society want news to continue to be produced, I think everywhere we're going to have to talk about subsidies. The Stigler Report was an influential report in which Andrea was a member. And as well as Julia Cagay and recommends media vouchers of $50 per US ad built per year, so around 12 billion per year. Of which at least 50% of that would go to local media producers. That's one possibility. The Australian government has introduced a new bargaining code. This is all good. Let's experiment. I mean, we as a society, we should experiment with alternative structures. My view of the initial results of the Australian Bargaining Code for the goal of providing more compensation for news is so far, it's good. There's there have been deals reached with biggest commercial players, but of course, the jury is still out. What about public service broadcasters? Or what about deals with smaller players? I've not been able to find out very much. I know deals have been made with smaller players, but are these on comparable terms and conditions? I just don't know yet. I think what's most interesting, though, is that. Everyone in the world is paying attention to this new Australian broadcasting code. And I think that was really, in my view, what was motivating Facebook's reluctance in Australia. Because clearly it's beneficial for them to reach a deal in Australia. But of course, if they reach a deal in Australia, every other country in the world looks around and says, hey. And so maybe Luisa can do the UK's interest in such a code, broadcasting code in in the UK. But wherever it's further, I I believe this will be coming elsewhere. Or some kinds of regulations will be coming elsewhere. And I think it's certainly interesting to think about further experimentation. So, you know. Digital platforms are fabulous at targeting customers. Maybe some of the, instead of just seeking pure compensation, I think it would be reasonable for for public service broadcasters to think about using these digital platforms. To target news to help close this information gap that Andrea was talking about. Why not? I mean, that's certainly one of the goals of the of the public service broadcasting system. And that may be more valuable than just money. Anyway, these are all interesting ideas that remain to be seen. But I will stop there and say thank you. And I look forward to the discussion among the panelists and among the audience.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, all of you. It was really fascinating to hear such a variety of questions and queries and potential solutions. So we have one question for Helen and Kira. Talking about the fact that. Once we've established that, there is a rationale for PSP, even though it's a citizen's market failure one rather than a consumer market failure. What are your views about the the need for potential change for institutional arrangements? In other words, would you envisage a different way of providing PSP content? Maybe different providers or one provider only? Any, any thoughts on that? And then there is another question for Andrea and Greg. I'll I'll put the questions to you now, so you can start thinking about the answers, given that we've only got 10 minutes left. So for Andrea and Greg, Andrea's paper points to the fact that PSP may not be effective at closing the information inequality gap. If that is the case, would one approach be to require PSPs to engage with online platforms such as Google and Facebook? To help distribute promote news and current affairs content? And then if I can be cheeky enough and put a question to Greg of my own, which is. I mean, as you say, obviously, we don't know what is the value that platforms get. From hosting the the news content as opposed to the value that publishers get from the click through from. The platforms themselves. So given that, A, we have no data, we don't know who's gaining, who's not. But also, obviously, those platforms are a gatekeeper anyway, in any case. So there is also the kind of bottleneck issue. Why isn't then the Stigler recommendation of something like that, which identifies the the valuable content? And, you know, subsidizes it with a kind of public fund? And then taxes the the platforms for the negative externalities they impose on us? Or is that not a better solution? So let me stop there and pass on to maybe Helen and Kira and then Andrea and Greg.
Kira, would you like me to go first, because I can talk sort of from principles? And then maybe you can talk about how Ofcom is thinking about these questions or this particular question in practice?
Sounds good.
Okay, so the question is, I understand it, Luisa, is that. Now that the rationale for PSP comes more from the citizenship side, what does that imply for how we provide and deliver it? So I touched on this a little bit in my talk. Obviously, when the rationale comes from the consumer side, it's all about what people themselves want to watch. We don't need to worry about this so much. It's just a matter of produce the stuff, make sure it's out there. People will go and find it because it's what they themselves want to watch. I mean, we were, of course, also in an analog world where there just wasn't that much choice anyway. So just, you know, things would be on your standard TV channels and kind of that's the end of the matter. Now we have, well, there's two things happen. One, if we're not worried so much about consumers themselves and what they get for their own interests. We're concerned about what people get and watch to satisfy broader societal concerns. Then it's not just a matter of people going and choosing the thing they most want to watch. We might have to help sort of induce that. I mean, this isn't entirely a new problem, obviously, to the extent that it was always this citizenship element. Broadcasters had to think about how to make their programming attractive. You know, putting PSP messages into popular programming goes back to, well, certainly the 1950s. The sort of classic starting point that always occurs to me is The Archers started in 1951. It's a radio program rather than TV. But it was explicitly aiming to put information about farming practices into a popular format. It's a radio soap. And so people in the farming community would hear that. You know, Sesame Street was an educational programming. I mean, that was devised a long time ago in the 60s. As explicitly for children's programming that children and their parents would want to watch. But it had a definite educational purpose. So this isn't new. But it obviously matters far more when people have lots and lots and lots of chops and, you know. Making sure that people actually want to watch this stuff is a big issue. So delivery is the other issue. It's not clear to me that having standalone PSP services, albeit there's a certain amount of mixing there between, you know, popular content, worthy content. You know, obviously do the worthy content in a popular, attractive way too. But, you know, techniques like hammocking and so on. I mean, you can have analogs, you know, forms of this online, you know, how you can use the popular content to draw people in and bring them to the worthy, you know, citizenship. Type content, you know, there's things you can do. But I just wonder if we need to go further, you know, get it on Netflix. I mean, why shouldn't, and also it's not just about where you put it, but. Different providers can innovate in having different ways of making things attractive and getting those messages out there. The BBC and ITV and the other PSPs, I mean, albeit they have a commissioning, they have to commission from other providers, but they're still doing the commissioning. So, you know, I've certainly heard it, EG from Sky, that, you know, let us do local news. We could do it in ways that would bring more audiences to it and make it more popular and do it better. There are complementarities between local newspapers who might be able to have a sort of local TV news channel. You know, there's more ways of doing this, and I mean, on the production side, not just the distribution side, that might help with this problem. At that point, I'll hand over to Kira.
Thanks. Okay, thanks Helen and the thanks Luisa. So this is, this is an area that we have covered in our consultation. So one of the areas we're looking at is obviously the world has changed a lot. And and I think the issue is less so much that things have changed from consumer benefits to citizen benefits. But it's a question of sort of reach. So, you know, I think the citizen benefits of PSP can be very, very important. But there's a question of, you know, they're only effective as long as they reach the audience, which I thought Andrea touched on very well. And there, when we're thinking about what's the best institutional way to deliver it. You know, we have to be careful of, but we want to kind of balance both what preserving what we already have and what's a strength. But also not being complacent and seeing how can we address the challenges of the future? So in terms of what we have. And, you know, the audience for the existing PSPs is falling, but it's still pretty high. You know, and the BBC still reaches 90% of people a week, not necessarily through TV, but across all its all its media. When you look at the the news website and radio as well. And their brand really matters in broadcasting. So, you know, people sometimes go to things, a particular program in mind, but often they'll browse the channel. And they'd be, they're more likely to browse the channel or the service that they already have an affinity with. So if they think the browsing, my, my team, like other teams, always goes to Netflix as a first point to look at what's there. Because of the brand, the, you know, the Netflix brand carries over all the content. And that's the same in some ways from the BBC, what you expect to see in the BBC Channel 4 as well. And within the UK PSPs, one, the BBC costs the public money. Something like Channel 4 doesn't cost any money. You know, it's a marvelous way of getting PSP content to audiences without the audiences paying for it. So it takes advertising revenue and uses it to fund PSP type content. Obviously, they get benefits in kind, there's always a cost to regulation. But there's a question of, you know, there's a case on it. But we're very, very conscious that the reach of the PSPs is declining. And there's the challenge of are they reaching all audiences, particularly younger audiences? And that's something we also considered in our PSP as to whether or not there's a case for new provision. And particularly. Reaching other platforms.
We only have three minutes left, so I I I wanted to pass on to Andrea and Greg for those three minutes.
Andrea, I would propose, I have some confident answers to some simple questions, but I'm uncertain about one which I think you're the expert for. So I would pass, I would quickly answer a few and then pass it to you for the hard one. Okay, so we see you asked two questions. So first, should digital platforms perhaps promote PSP content? And I think it was exactly what I was suggesting in my conclusion, I think, yes. And I could imagine this either by virtue of commercial negotiations underpinned by a regulation like the Australian Bargaining Code. Or just by direct regulation. I mean, Kira was talking about regulation of availability and prominence of search algorithms and recommendation. Algorithms on on online video services, but the exact same issues are prevalent and relevant for digital platforms. So I could see either of those as a possibility. They're hard, but 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 interesting and worth exploring. On your question about, well, we don't know the value to digital platforms of of this PSP content. I would say that's why these information gathering powers, if the UK were to invoke something like what the Australians did. Are potentially value. I mean, I agree without that, it's pointless. And so, but if there were a regulation that that brought that in, then that could permit that capability within a commercial negotiation. But the bigger question is why not just do something like the Stigler Report, which does actually include a tax? And so here's where I'm going to pass it to Andrea, because this is a hard one. I think, I think there are concerns raised in the Stigler Report. They also mentioned this, but they they mentioned these concerns about regulatory capture. So Andrea, with that difficult transition, let me pass it to you and and ask what are your thoughts? Because I think this is a hard one, and I don't have a firm view on this, so maybe you could.
It is a hard one, and I don't have an answer, definitely not an answer in 30 seconds. I think the key issue here is the the distinction between subsidizing production and subsidizing distribution. And a top down approach and a bottom up approach. I, we went for a voucher system in the end, where people can can kind of buy whatever news they want. In a country that doesn't have a PSP system like the US. So this is also very important, because the existing stuff matters. The, I think this is, this debate is very much open and and I hope we can do it with more and more data. That's, I think, what I can say in 30 seconds.
And that's an excellent point to conclude on, because I think this is the area where we will need to think quite concretely about. Solutions and data is the only real guide we can have in this space to try and avoid. Or minimize regulatory failures as we try and put pen to paper on what these rules should look like. So let me just. So let me just close by thanking our speakers. Thank you so much for accepting the invitation to, to speak today. I think it was an absolutely fascinating discussion. I, I certainly took a lot from this session. And I think there is a lot more, we could go on for hours. And I'm sure Ofcom will be coming and knocking on your door to read your future papers and, and get more of your thoughts on this. And on that note, I'm going to say thanks very much again. Thanks to the audience for listening.